We have another one that's going on in high school. And so we want to make sure that everyone gets the exact same information. And so it will seem a rehearsed script because that way we can guarantee that everyone is hearing the same thing. We don't want two different groups to have two different sets of information. And then when he's finished, I will take over. We'll have a pause for some questions and interactions. And then we'll have some more, and we'll have some questions and interactions. And we'll shut them off when they do it.
Welcome to Hoppe Elementary on this dreary night. But thank you to each of you for coming. Thank you for the time to join us here tonight. We will begin with some background, followed with a recap of board working at this town hall. We will then ask you your feedback and questions. The information we gathered at this town hall meeting was quite valuable input and assistance as we finalize our new governance model. As you will learn this evening, this model includes student outcome goals and superintendent constraints. Our board is committed to transformational change for our charter schools. Specifically, we want to ensure that each and every child learns everything they are supposed to learn during each school year so they start the next school year ready for continued success. A child completed first grade should have learned everything they were supposed to. So he or she is ready to achieve and sell in the second grade. The commitment is driving action on many fronts. For example, a team of over 100 people from our community developed a comprehensive strategic plan for G.I.S.D. The plan addresses many issues from addressing learning gaps, educated compensation, improved facilities, and to the whole child support for children these outside academic instruction. Tonight, we will discuss another key effort which will support transformational change that concerns governance by the school board. The board seeks to implement a new innovative system called Lone Star Governance. Lacking a strategic plan, Lone Star Governance has a specific goal: improving student outcomes. It uses recognized, reliable data to measure how our students are doing now. We'll talk about that and explain it to you. The student outcome goals also set clearly defined annual points over the next three years. We will start where the data says we are now and to a place we're going to be. In the meantime, our board will be focused on achieving those goals. We also place restrictions on superintendent staff. These constraints prohibit certain activities which run counter to achieving the goals. We firmly believe that implementing this new model will provide a culture of student success. Simply put, we want the best. Our children deserve no less. We firmly believe that adopting this governance model will help us get there. We appreciate you taking the time to be here, to learn about this, and to help us as we move forward. Background. Lone Star Governance is a unique dad-driven training initiative for school boards and superintendents. It focuses intensely on one primary objective: improving student outcomes. We did not attend this training because we were required to, rather after learning about the system, we saw it as an opportunity for transformational change. Why do we seek this change? Simply put, too many G.I.S.D. students are not learning what they are supposed to be learning each school year. This leads to declining academic performance in future years. We see this declining academic performance and subpar performance on STAR and other tests designed to measure academic achievement. It's a bad income for the students, our educators, and our community. As school board members, we simply cannot let this continue. Too many children are not succeeding. Our community suffers as a result. We are legally, morally, and ethically driven to do better. Lone Star Governance accomplishes this change... Sorry, I have to look back and see if it's up there. Lone Star Governance accomplishes this change through intense focus tailored execution of the five points of the Texas Framework for School Board Development: division, accountability, structure, unity, and advocacy. In addition to our singular focus on improving student outcomes, this model provides a system for governing the secondary but vital legal and fiscal responsibilities of the board. Now to the foundation for our focus on student outcomes. The development of the 2017 to 2020 G.I.S.D. Strategic Plan provided belief statements that guide board action. As we looked to improve our practice as a board, we found these two belief statements to be powerful anchors. Every child can learn. Every child should have equal access to learn, grow, and become successful adults. Participating in Lone Star Governance training introduced to the following statement to describe a mindset of leadership. Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. Starting with me, I cannot and will not accept mediocre student outcomes. Finally, through the process of developing the student outcome goals, we recognize that unless we confront ugly truths about where we are now, we can never change for the better. Next is Matt Hay, physician at UTMB, president of our board.
So student outcomes and goal progress measures. So since July of 2017, we have been discussing student outcomes that will help us determine a positive direction for our district. And we have chosen three goals. And why three? So the analogy that's used is that you have one can of gas. And if you provide equal portions of the gas to 10 different vehicles, you might start those vehicles, but they're not going to drive very far. Limiting our goals means we'll have enough gasoline in the tank to accomplish the goal that we set forth. Put another way, setting a whole bunch of goals can overwhelm the staff, create conflicting priorities. Instead, we sought broad goals that would cover many important issues which can be addressed on a systematic and holistic basis. We received input from G.I.S.D.'s educational staff to understand that reading and literacy are the foundations for profound learning. This information helped us determine that early childhood literacy must be our first student outcome goal. So our first student outcome goal is the percentage of students in third grade reading scoring meets on the grade level as measured by the state's assessment STAR will be at 56% by the end of 2019-20 school year. So let's break that down. Some of you may not be aware of this, but the state has four categories of STAR results: masters, meets, approaches, and does not meet grade level. The test currently allows a student to be passing if they approach grade level. An approaches is less than meets grade level. And basically, it means that a student will still require remedial learning in order to be ready for the next grade level, but that's what approaches means in the state. So to us, meets and or masters grade level is where we want our children to be. So that's the goal that we set instead of approaches. So although almost all of our elementary schools met standard, only 41% of our third grade students attending G.I.S.D. schools scored well enough on the STAR reading test to show that they had met or mastered, not approaches, what they were supposed to learn for that year, meaning ready for fourth grade and beyond. Some of you may be surprised by that low number. We certainly were. Moreover, this met and masters number for third grade reading is not an outlier. It is consistent with G.I.S.D. test results on All-Star tests and high school and his course exams. Additionally, this score includes all G.I.S.D. elementary schools. Some schools exceeded the 41%, while others were below it. As a board, we have chosen not to accept the mediocre student outcomes simply because others do. Otherwise, doing so runs counter to everything we believe. You may think the goal, taking 41% and increasing it to 56% over three years, is not enough. We certainly felt that way as we started with the goal, and there was quite a bit of discussion. However, after long meetings with the staff to develop numbers, we came up with numbers that we felt were achievable and realistic. We all hope that this effort will drive change and gets us there much sooner. When we do get there, whether it's in one year or two years instead of three years, we will promptly set new goals that will take us to higher levels. This will be a continuous process of student outcome improvement. The board's ultimate goal, obviously, is for all students 100% to be at meets or masters grade level. That's where we should be, and that's where we want to be. Getting from here to there will take some time. So each student outcome goal is supported by three goal progress measures, and they're called GPMs, so we're going to save a little time. So a GPM, goal progress measure. And these were developed by the G.I.S.D. staff, led by Superintendent Dr. Moulton and Assistant Superintendent Dr. Scott. And these GPMs will be presented at board meetings on a schedule rotating to determine if adult behaviors are making a difference in student outcomes. Information will be provided at the campus level as well as at the district level overall. We won't declare victory simply because of good progress at one or two campuses that improves the numbers overall. Rather, we expect continuous improvement in all the schools. The information provided by the staff and the board discussion about goal progress measures should reflect 50% of every school board meeting. So if a meeting's two hours, one hour of that meeting should be all about student outcome goals. I'm going to add this part off-script. Not about, as we talked about, whether you should be buying one ply or two-ply toilet paper, or other kinds of things that have nothing to do with our student outcomes. So the first goal progress measure, 1.1, the percentage of pre-kindergarten students in either pre-K3 and pre-K4 who master, so the teacher's SLOs, student learning objectives will increase from 40% to 80% by the end of the 2020 school year. So baseline is at 40% now. It'll be 60% at the end of this year, 70% at the end of the next school year, and 80% at the end. That was not there, sorry.
But they haven't.
And you're in your handouts. And then 1.2 is the percentage of students in kindergarten and first grade who master those SLOs will also go from 40 to 80% in the same setup. So by now, you may be wondering about student learning objectives. Those are measures to assess teachers' contributions to student achievement of content standards and are used in our educator evaluation system. At the heart of an SLO is a specific learning goal and a specific measure of student learning used to track progress towards that goal. Each of our G.I.S.D. campuses has a learning focus, based on the campus focus and the standards for each grade or class content teachers have developed. Three SLOs. The SLOs have been reviewed and approved by the campus administration, and the SLOs will help us measure student learning that is a direct result of that year's instruction. 1.3, the third one, is the percentage of students in second grade who are reading at or above grade level with the BOI beginning-of-the-year renaissance learning. That will increase from 44% to 60% by the end of the same timeframe. 44, 50, 55, and 60%. And again, if we achieve any of those before, then things will get real dead. So the student outcome goal number two focuses on the readiness of students to fully understand and utilize literacy and numeracy to participate successfully in high school. So we did early literacy. Now it is going to be the percentage of students at the completion of the grade nine who score meets or masters at grade level for Algebra I and English I will increase from 18% to 50% by the end of the 2020 school year. G.I.S.D. student outcome goal two is unique in that G.I.S.D. board is assessing both Algebra I and English I performance on the STAR. Again, we've chosen to monitor only masters and meets performance categories. The combination of the two assessments reveals that G.I.S.D. students struggle to master or meet grade level performance. It became a true call to action to find that only 18% of our ninth graders at the end of the year had met it in both English and in Algebra at the same time. We must improve student outcomes, and that begins with me. So the goal progress measures for that are going to be... 2.1 is the percentage of eighth-grade students who score meets grade level on the first administration of the Algebra I ELC will increase from 74 to 80% by the end of this school year 2020. And 74 going up to eight. Number 2.2 is the percentage of third to eighth graders, English-language learners, who then have approaching meets or masters on the Reading or Writing STAR will increase from 54 to 60%. 54, 56, 58, and 60 by the end of 2020. And 2.3 is the percentage of students in the grades three through eight who are on track to meet or master both Reading and Math STAR, and that will increase from 43 to 50% by the end of the 2020 school year. So "on track to meet or master" is a set of words that was used because it's a measure reflected in the college and career readiness measure of the STAR. We measure not only student performance, but also the rate of the student's improvement through grades three through eight. So if the student does not score meets or masters, their rate of improvement may signal that they are on track to meet or master. The third G.I.S.D. student outcome goal is an expression of our mission. So the mission is to educate, engage, and empower every student for a lifetime of excellence. The student outcome goal utilizes the new state accountability measure of college, career, and military readiness. And that's new this year, the way it was put together. So number three is percent of college and career-ready graduates calculated as a percent of annual graduates who accomplish at least one of the following, and it will increase from 77.8%, which is where we're at now, to 90% by the end of the 2020 school year. So number one, met or exceeded the Texas Success Initiative, TSI criteria, in both English and reading and math on either the TSIA, the SAT, or the ACT. So one of those three accomplishes that. Or completed and earned credit for at least two advanced dual-credit or dual-enrollment courses. So advanced being the AP or dual-credit or a combination of both. And the third is enrolled in a coherent sequence of CTE courses, where not a single CTE, but if welding has three parts in a row, a coherent sequence of those three. We recognize that 77.8% that the student goal appears to be more advanced than our other two goals. However, we have every expectation that each student be prepared for a life of excellence, and we must do better. The conversations, discussions, expectations that we have as a board are intended to drive how the adults in our system work with students to meet those goals. So then those will have progress measures. And the first progress measure, 3.1, is the percentage of ninth through 12th grade students meeting the TSI criteria in reading and math will increase from 40 to 50% over the next three years by 2020. 3.2 is the percentage of those ninth to 12th grade students enrolled in a dual-credit course will increase from 42% to 53% by the end of the school year. The 3.3 is the percentage of those same students earning a three or higher on the AP exam will increase from 34 to 50% by the end of the 2020 school year. This presentation of student outcome goals and goal progress measures has probably caused some of you or most of you to ask why we're not shooting for 100% on every goal and every progress measure. So when we started this, the base point for a goal is it must be a SMART goal. And so some people have seen SMART goals in other settings, but we're going to sort of explain a SMART goal, so apologize if you're already aware of what it is. But SMART goals should be specific, so goals that are simplistically written and clearly define what you're going to do. They should be measurable, so you have tangible evidence that you have accomplished the goal. Usually, the entire goal statement is a measure for the project, but there are usually several short-term small measurements built into the goal. Achievable. Goals should be achievable. They should stretch you so you feel challenged, but defined well enough that you can achieve them. You must possess the appropriate knowledge, skills, and abilities needed to achieve the goal. Result-focused. Goals should measure outcomes, not activities. And time-bound. Goals should be linked to a timeframe that creates a practical sense of urgency or results in tension between the current reality and the vision of the goal. Without such tension, the goal is unlikely to produce a regular outcome. And so in that part for explaining the why not the 100%, when someone achieves something, there's a sense of accomplishment. And if you set a goal that is completely unrealistic, then at the end of your time of performing your activity, no matter how well you do, you will look at it as failure because you've achieved not your goal. So you don't want to set your goal so low that you basically feel like you've achieved nothing, but you don't want to set it so high that you're going to end up setting yourself for failure. We recognize that we must develop capacity to achieve these student outcome goals and goal progress measures. We have the authority and the will to adjust the goals once we've exceeded the annual measure. So we have shared these three student outcome goals: early childhood literacy, high school readiness, and college, career, and military readiness. So you've been asked here to share your thoughts on these student outcome goals. Please share your thoughts and any questions you might have about these goals. We will record all your comments and questions. If we can answer the question tonight, we'll answer it. If we can't, and we will record those answers as well. And we will post all of our comments, questions, and answers to the website. If we cannot answer your questions, then we will get back to you with those corrected answers. And then we will engage in a discussion of the comments, questions, and answers at our upcoming finance meeting and our regular board meeting, which is not next week, but two weeks from now. We have meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday, the 19th and the 20th. The information we receive and discuss will inform our adoption of these student outcome goals and goal progress measures. And this is not actually the end, but this is a point at which we're stopping because we want to hear, for those of you that came, comments about the stuff that Mr. Jinx and I just talked about, but the one shorter section that we're still going to discuss. I went through some water, so...
So after hearing about student outcome goals and goal progress measures, what questions do you have or clarifications can we provide? So you're probably not used to the board having this level of conversation. So they've spent the last six months talking about and researching what are the things that they can look at that will help drive performance for our students. Katie, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. On the GPMs, okay, so 1.1 and 1.2 with the SLOs, where's the data from the baseline or for the baseline? Pilot schools?
Yeah.
That's where I am...
So we would have gotten this from our taxi and work. And so the work that we did on the originals.
Okay. I have another question. Okay. I also would like to know if, so for those same progress measures, will there be, or I guess in the plan for SLOs, will there be more consistency with grade levels in their SLOs across the district? Right now, it's a little bit open. We are asked to do a district and a campus goals, but will there be more, you know, will they be held, the teachers be held more accountable to a consistent SLO?
So we're in the process of developing SLOs. You guys know that at the campus, and as we move through that. This is our first full-blown year of being able to do that, so certainly will set some boundaries for us as we move forward. Yes, we want to be more consistent, but we also recognize that the power of a classroom happens in the classroom, and so there has to be some ability to diversify and have some differentiation in there. But being able to continue our training with our administrators about how they approve and adopt SLOs is going to be really important as we continue to move on. That calibration of what you're asking is going to develop. So we'll be watching that. We're not competing against any school. There's no, you know, I scored more than met and not you. This is a district-level version of this, and so we will continue to refine as we work our SLOs.
And we're focused on student outcomes.
Okay. I'm going to answer a question you haven't asked, because if you're going to be listening to this. So the board owns the student outcome goals. The administration and the team owns the progress measures and will use them to present to us so we can see if we're making progress to the student outcome goals. Did I give that correct? I don't know if anyone had that, I think the question apart. We set the goals. They set the progress measures. We don't set the progress measures. We're not educators, and so that's... So one of the questions, maybe, as the board is going to pick progress measures, and the answer is, we aren't and shouldn't. And so everyone else should, and then that's the information that monthly should come to the board. So, and I have a vision of the board meeting where we bring stuff together, and people can put up rewards, and we do all that stuff. And then basically, whichever of those measures get presented to us, and this is where we did good, and this is where we flopped, and this is where we... Okay, so next month, what are we going to do so at the end of the year, we're getting a little numbers? Alice, have a question?
Well, I was just looking at 1.3, and it shows, it's for second grade reading at above grade level, but it's at the beginning of the year. You know, is that fair to testament at the beginning of the year? Would we not want to, I mean, end of the year, middle of the year?
That's really the beginning of the year. And that's really good, and that's a great question. So progress measures are informing throughout the year. We can't give them the ELY throughout the year.
Sure, sure.
So we're going to give them?
Right, okay.
And I guess I would add, at the end of the year, we're already at the third grade mark, so then it would be... Right, so then that's where, I guess, knowing if the beginning of the year is in the pits, then we probably don't want to know in May that we were in the pits.
So one of the things I really like about what Ms. Prentz just asked is, are we then going to use our MOIs and ELYs in order to inform the board as we continue through that school year? And I think maybe a rewrite on that particular progress measure might be something that we need to consider in the next several weeks. So thank you.
Where it says ELY, then MOY, then ELY depending on when the board meeting's taking place.
And it might just simply say, beginning with ELY.
And that might be something to consider, too, if the first two that I was talking about earlier, because those are very similar. The SLOs are kind of done just on a BOY and an ELY basis. They're not necessarily something that we are actively monitoring throughout. I mean, it could be, but as of right now, I think it's, it has been introduced as something that's just the beginning and the very end.
So then we get like, 1.2, you get your, what are you at at the beginning, and then...
And given that we've got nine of these, and we're going to do several, only several, not all of them every month, it may be that it's an introduction, this is where we are in our SLOs. And look, your teachers have said that they're at this particular place now with projections of going forward. Those of you that are in the classroom, you've already set those up. You know what your progress is going to be. Are we meeting that? Are we getting that? What does that look like at a variety of different campuses, at a variety of different grade levels? That information then will be something that CNI staff will then present to the board.
I have a question for the man on the street. How are you tracking the progress? How often is it tracked? And how available is that information?
Right, so in particular, or like early childhood literacy and looking at those progress measures? So we'll have a calendar. We'll develop a calendar when we take this information to the board. Campuses are doing this every week, sometimes multiple times a week. But how we then aggregate that across the district will be something that we set up and then be able to bring to the board. I think we'll be learning as we go through that. Is it enough? Is it showing progress? Is it not showing anything? As we develop that calendar and be able to move that forward, that'll tell us. It's how often we draw it from the campuses, but the campuses are measuring weekly.
Other questions?
Any other questions or clarifications? After here?
Oh. I want to, maybe going down a different path here, but in years past, we had a vision from the district, and we had something called Teacher Career Academies. And it was a three-week gig, and teachers were incentivized to attend such career academy trainings. It was by a gentleman named Ernie Stokowski. I don't know that he's still active, but I'll tell you that it made me the best teacher that I could ever be. And so you can throw these... And so you can throw these goals out, and that's great. We all need to make goals to improve. But how are we going to help those teachers that are struggling with their, I mean, I want some training. I want to know if I'm doing something wrong. And I want the young teachers and the second career teachers and so on to have the ability to be trained to be able to work on these goals.
That's a really great point. One of the things about this particular governance model is that we're looking only at student outcome goals. The things then that layer and scaffold in order to make that possible become the property of staff. So in working with teachers, it's your support center, curriculum, and instruction staff who would address something like that. It doesn't fall under student outcome goals. We know that teacher outcome, teacher input, teacher training all lead to that, but that's not the measure that the board is adopting to look at. Important, valuable, noted, but not part of the student outcome.
And that's what words and adding to that. I think the point being, too, is that the numbers aren't going to move the way we want them to move. If that part isn't addressed, I think that's the...
There is so much more that goes on in school than just this. I mean, we can't distill everything we do into three goals, but we have to start somewhere. And we have to keep the focus on those things that we think have the most leverage moving us forward.
And we will be rating ourselves as something you've probably never seen before either, is the board giving ratings to what we're doing.
So every quarter, the board has a rubric where they rate themselves on these five areas: vision, accountability, structure, community, and advocacy. And they get points. We did a baseline. How many points did we get?
Zero.
Zero?
That was two months ago. That was six months ago and three months ago.
Yeah, we did our first quarter just last month, and how many points did we get?
Nine.
Nine. Out of 100.
Out of 100, so...
I have to say that I really appreciate the honesty and the transparency, and we're not trying to sleep under the rug. We're like, this is what it is, and let's go from here.
Some of the, and I thought about bringing it, but it wasn't on a slide, so I couldn't share with everybody. So some of that, it's in the kind of rubrics you all get when you're giving, you know, grades and stuff with the kids. But you have to do, like, you can score all these points here, but you're missing one single element here that blocks you from going from zero to 12, right? And so almost half of the points can't be scored until you have town halls. And so we could never have scored more than nine because we hadn't actually sat and done this today and Ball High and next week at CBE and what's. So, and then we have to adopt them. If we never vote to adopt, then you can still never get past. And so, but it's, the truth is that we thought in three months, oh, sure, we were sitting in this thing. And I can remember the seven board members that were there. I think six board members, because we didn't have Mr. Smack at the time. And everyone was like, oh, we can get to 40 or 50. And I'm like, no chance we're going to get past about three because we just couldn't do anything fast enough.
Time limit.
And so, and you can skip. You can get to 28 points really fast by skipping the town hall. But then you can never get above 28 points, right? Because you can never score a high enough point on any of the other rubrics. You know, it's like you leave something off the assignment, it totally deletes the whole thing. So we are failing continuously. Now, in three more months, six, 10 more weeks, there should be...
You're an RTI right now.
Right, yes, we are. We are very much so. But that is the biggest part of it, so... And for those of you that didn't see the previous board meeting, when we went to the training, Dr. Temple will tell you publicly, he spent really the first half of the first day just like, this is just ridiculous. We're spending time here, and because this was about, you couldn't, I think I've been at 50 hundred. Couldn't do anything without saying aye. Me, aye, 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 aye. Because most of us all talk about stuff that happens and we use a third person that, you know, this is our emphasis, aye. And by the end, he was like, wow, this is amazing because it's really all of our driving part. So, yes, we have a nine. And it doesn't change that, whether you tell people about it or not, so you might as well just be honest. If we have a nine in nine months, then there's a problem.
So we really utilize these couple of ideals, the one that's in all of our paperwork for Lone Star Governance and work as a board and team and a superintendent. Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, and that's the whole starting with me. We had a whole lesson on that. And then this other one is one that I shared with the board. You have to start with being honest with ourselves and others first so that you can create capacity for change. Because if you never are honest about where you really are starting from, change doesn't happen. And we want to, we want to highlight the good things. We want to be able to say those things. We all want to share the best, but you can't bring your bottom up if you're not real about it. So Kelly, is there something that you're going to share with faculty and staff as well? Because those two bullets can apply to us, too? Okay.
That's a really good point, too. How do we roll this out internally?
We've been sharing with principals in terms of the goals and progress measures because, as you know, we're halfway through the first year, and we've already given goals out there that are pretty lofty. Just FYI, since this is mostly a staff group, but these also become the goals in which I measure.
Yes, the annual superintendent measurement stuff, it used to be this checklist, and it was, we got four and three, and we added them all up. And I had to take seven board members' little pieces of paper and had to average seven scores for each topic and stuff. Now it's pretty straightforward. Either the superintendent is making progress with the goals or she's not.
It's all about the numbers. The numbers are real.
Data.
More questions about this, otherwise there's a shortcut. It's not as long as the one I just read. Oh, sorry, you still have to...
So after hearing about the three student outcome goals and the progress measures, is the focus on early literacy, high school readiness, and college career military readiness the direction you hope to see for Galveston ISD?
We try to pick something from, not necessarily to say elementary, middle, and high school, but to pick a spread out because the question was, should we do literacy at third grade of literacy, at eighth grade of literacy? But then you miss out the whole rest, part of the child. At least that was the argument.
There was a lot of discussion about, we're responsible for a lot. The board is responsible for a lot. In statute, they're responsible for hiring the superintendent, setting the budget, and directing policy. But we also know, if that's a group of seven that's not looking at student achievement, why should the rest of us? How can your GISD board best communicate progress? That's a good question. On these student outcome goals and goal progress measures? How do you want to hear about progress?
As a parent, I do not watch the board meetings or whatever. Sorry. But I have been using the new app. So I'm really, really thrilled about the new app that also incorporates the emails that are sent out. So, I mean, I know you've been pushing in marketing, trying to get everyone to download it. And I know, I have a kid in the high school, too, and they use Remind. Here, they use ClassDojo, early start classes. So I check both of those daily. And so for me, for the high school, really, Remind is by far the most informative because it's a text message, which is better than an email. But, so for the parents that are less plugged in, I would say a text message is possible. But the app is great.
Like text message, check the website for the outcomes. They're all there.
Yeah, something like that, exactly. The city does that, too. I get City Alerts, and they do the same thing. I get a text saying, check the website. There's something going on.
And we now have those capabilities as of like 30 days ago, almost. Maybe two, whenever the first eBlast went out through the app, it was a whole, the app was one application that the district purchased. And then the whole connect system was a whole separate system. So we're... And in January, when we get back from Christmas, we're going to train all the principals as well. So right now, we've learned a little bit as we've gone, but we'll have two trainings that will encompass somebody from every single campus. And even right now, we only know like the very top of what we're capable of doing, but we'll have the ability to send text messages, phone calls, all different types of things. And not only will we have that ability at the admin level, but so will every school. So it's coming.
Allow me to introduce Callie. Callie is our communication specialist. She's been with us now since the beginning of school.
This is yours.
So a wealth of knowledge and experiences, and as we give her new tools and toys to play with, we'll do them into action.
It's appreciated, because last year, we were all very frustrated about the communication issue. This year, it's already been handled.
Good. And any feedback, I encourage. So the email that comes out, if you respond to it, it comes to me. So if there's things that are missing or something you'd like to see more of, I'd love to hear it.
So here's one thing I already noticed we're missing tonight. We're not doing this in Spanish. And it's our response and reporting in Spanish or in parents' language. So we will, we will work on that.
I'm going to do the recording, so I can answer that question.
Anything else that you would like to see in regards to the communication on this work?
Do you guys share these goals with, I mean, obviously, maybe not elementary, but with the high school students? I'd be curious to know how involved they would maybe be in it. And just, I mean, it's just a thought. Sometimes they hold to that and, you know, like to become a part of it.
So we have a little friendlier version than the actual measured SMART goals. But we have a student group that's working on the portrait of a graduate. And so what are those skills and knowledge base that all students should have when they leave Ball High School? Or AIM?
When we did the strategic plan, I don't know how many of those of you got to attend that, but we had students at the strategic plan. And a lot of people told me afterwards that they thought the students gave some of the best ideas. And so, and I had a student come up to me today at Ways of Economic Development and just said, hey, why aren't hospitality students involved in being on the cruise ships? They're floating hotels. And I was like, huh, that's a great idea. And so they do. They think about stuff that we don't think about. So I know we enjoyed having them on things.
Be intentional with that. Thanks, on to the next.
Without all your question parts, and everyone else was good. So this last part is something called superintendent constraints. So as part of the Lone Star Governance, we provide our superintendent with constraints. Those behaviors and actions that are so contrary to student outcome goals and the management of the district that we will measure the superintendent's performance based on the constraints. The superintendent shall have the autonomy beyond the constraints to lead the district to achieve student outcome goals and goal progress measures. So thou shall not, is kind of what they got called in Lone Star Governance. And other districts, if you go, Midland has, is probably the one that's the most up to date. And so anyone that goes to Midland's ISD stuff, you can see what they've chosen. But, so the first superintendent constraint was the superintendent shall not allow any campuses to forego implementation of the district's initiatives to meet student progress measures. And so then everything has a progress measure, so there's a constraint progress measure just like there was a goal progress measure. So the constraint progress measure, 1.1, is all district elementary campuses will have 56% or greater of their third grade students reading on grade level by 2020. So remember, the goal was to get the district at 56%, which you could achieve without actually having all of the campuses at 56%, if you just do the math. But the constraint progress measure is that all district elementary campuses will be at 56% or greater by the end of 2020. So by the end, by the end of the 17th school year, and we've already finished, we had 17% of the schools. And so there are five. And by the end of this year, we expect to be at 50%. And by the end of next year, we expect to be at 67%. So at the end of 2020, we expect all of the elementary campuses to be at 56%, which if they do, the math says we will be well above 56% because the lowest number you can average is 56, and therefore you'll be way above 56%. 1.2, 90% of GISD graduates leave high school, college-ready, career-ready, and military-ready by 2020. Each year, 78, 82, 86, and 90. And the superintendent, so number two for the constraint is the superintendent shall not allow adult convenience or preference to take priority over the academic progress of students. So constraint progress measure. The percentage of students at improvement in required campuses will decrease from 16% to 0% by the end of the 2020. So that means that by the end, and actually, the way it's written, it's 16, 16, 0, 0. So by the end of next year, we will have no improvement in required campuses to meet that progress measure. And then the third one is superintendent shall not allow inequities in co-curricular activities at the campus level. So the constraint progress measure is the percentage of students participating in extracurricular activities will increase at secondary campuses 5% each year for subsequent years. And remember that, if I get this right, the constraint progress measure is not the only part that applies to the actual constraint. So if it says the superintendent shall not allow adult convenience or preference to take priority over the academic progress of students, then that's the constraint to solve all the student outcome goals. One of the ways of measuring it is what you see in 2.1, but certainly the rest of the leeway is in the superintendent's hands. So again, you've been asked to share your thoughts on our three superintendent constraints. Please share your thoughts and any questions you might have about these goals. We'll record all the comments and questions. If we can answer them, we will. If we can't, we won't. And again, we'll talk about it in our finance and board meeting. And so this is where I'm sure you have more questions for them to...
So after hearing about superintendent constraints and constraint progress measures, what questions do you have and what clarifications can we provide? So let me tell you this. So when superintendents around the state said, what, superintendent constraints? Besides these three things? I can do whatever I want to make sure that we're accomplishing those goals. So it's really great freedom to make sure the district can move forward. Because if I do something and I have a board member that comes to me and says, I don't think that's right. Was it a constraint? Well, then we're going to do it. Because we decided as a staff, that's where we're going.
The constraints were much harder for the board to come up with than the actual student outcome goals. student outcome goals. Because some of it was, if you look at the schools that have done this, they all chose exactly the same constraints. We didn't. But they were all like, thou shalt not spend two years' experience. And that's a constraint. So the superintendent can do whatever they want, but they can't have a new principal, a first-year principal or a second-year principal if the school is I.O. Doesn't matter whether they are. Best thing since life's bred. That's a constraint. And so, and almost everyone chose that. And again, it's not like there's 100 of them. There's like a dozen or so that had good, but that was a popular one. Thou shalt not have an improvement required district for consecutive years, or improvement required school for consecutive years. So that meant if after two years, you had an improvement required school, you had to close the school.
Which is really a loss.
Because the constraint was, you couldn't have it for more than two years. So some of the constr-, but if you want, well, wait a minute here. What if they're like one, so that's, the constraint got to be difficult. And again, constraints can certainly be adjusted or changed based on, but the goal when you do all this is that this is what you like for. And the best part really that we got told was, is look, if she does something you don't like and you didn't tell her she couldn't do it, that's your fault, not her fault. That's a constraint.
So what do you think about that?
And I see some similarities with this and with the town hall meetings, the parents that came last year and what they wanted to see. I do see some continuity, like especially the co-curricular activities. That was a big, you know, issue with those parents. So I see, you know, that's good. You're covering your bases. You're, yeah, responding to what the public is.
The hard part of that is also using inequities because not every school is necessarily gonna have all the same thing. That's not what it says.
Right.
But every school should, there should be no way you should build a school and think that one school is being treated differently than another. But it isn't simply everyone has to have exactly this program.
Right.
Is that kind of the theory?
Yeah, because we spent 10 years trying to establish magnet identities and being able to serve the needs of the kids. And that's, every campus is gonna be different every year because of who the staff and the student staff. How can the board communicate progress on this? How do you wanna hear about how the superintendent is performing, whether the constraints are being met? Do you wanna hear about that?
At the bottom of the kids' progress reports?
Here's your child's progress report and here's your associate's progress report.
Here's your board card.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, being able to put that out. I think again, having Callie's important because she will keep us on our toes about putting these things on the webpage. We will have a section that is about governance and student outcome goals and so that we'll post. You know, we're meeting, board met last night. They reviewed these goal progress measures and this is where we are and this is what they said.
We mail out the report cards still every six weeks to all grades.
Are babies at mine?
No.
Six.
So can you- No, no, you stuff a quarterly.
Well, they don't all get mailed.
Yeah, they usually-
No, they just go back. We don't- But you-
But certainly post every six weeks.
We stick a lot of stuff in underboard. We do our beginning year, middle year.
So one thing parents always do, okay?
Exactly.
Even of reference to it.
Yeah, there's some way I need to check the notes.
That would be a good checkpoint.
And maybe at the third, I'm just, I'm just thinking out of the box, you know, three to six weeks or something, you know, and they're getting their report cards, our report card go out.
Yeah, I'm thinking first semester and second semester because you guys have a lot of information to go through and if you try pinning it in it to people every six weeks, it's gonna back.
Well, we have to do a quarterly progress measure. Now, I don't know if we would, if we just gave them our points and our report card thing, it would just be confusing and people would wind up and throw it away. But I don't know if that would even be something that people would be like, oh, okay, they're setting the, oh, but they're scoring. I don't know if that's good or bad. I mean, if 50% throw it away, then the other 50% are like, well, heck, they admitted they have 12 or 17 or 30.
And if you don't wanna kill any more trees by adding more paper on the bottom of our report card, we could say, board here, report card.
Report card available on?
Yeah.
Absolutely. There you go.
Okay. I was thinking about something that was always parent tree all the time. All the other flyers, if you attended.
Do mass emails ever go out for GISD?
They, yes. So every Monday, which that can be adjusted as well. Before we got the new communication system to go with the app, they were going out through Constant Contact and it was a subscribe model. And then Ms. Poulos would, could also send it out to the staff. But now with this new system that we've bought into, I have the ability to send out to all staff, which I've been doing. So if you're not getting the email, let me know and I can check for your name in the system. But it's going, I can send it to all staff, administrators, board members, all parents, as long as the information is correct in Skyward, because that's what it generates. So what we've tried to, any phone calls I get or we've instructed the secretaries to do is if a parent's not getting the information, they first have to correct it in Skyward. And then every 24 hours when it does the update, it updates in our communication system. So we have, once, once e-school is trained, you'll have the, the option to send out. You can do a push notification, a text, a phone call, an email. So once we get a little more savvy using that system, we can, you know, send out reminders. More downloads we get to our app, we can really start utilizing it. So we'll have more ways to quickly connect when we have, hopefully not. But another situation like Harvey, we'll be able to, to reach out a lot faster and use it similar to Remind. So that's the hope. And it's also connected to Horizon for the lunch balances and it's connected to the attendance system. So there's a lot of capabilities.
It'll also be connected to these child nutrition systems. So we'll be able to send things out with the student accounts.
Through the app as well?
Yes, through the app. So right now, they're both there. We're just waiting to double check the data since it's brand new. But the, the lunch balance notices will go out and so will the attendance notifications. So it has, it has a lot of capabilities and there's more different, more things we can add on once we get a little more comfortable with it. So it's, it's exciting.
So where you heard Ms. Poulos on School Messenger, you know, when you, when you get those. It'll be pushed out so campuses can use it and it will be more friendly to use.
One of the things that we got at the Long Star Governance Conference was the word laser. And I want everyone to understand, this whole process from the strategic plan to the Long Star Governance is being Laker, laser focused on student outcomes and the students. And that's what we're trying to do. So you might think about using that word because we really are trying to be laser focused on student outcomes. So I just wanted to share that because that was my biggest takeaway when I went to that conference, is that I need to become more focused and laser focused in a lot of situations.
If there's any other questions, I'll show Poulos. Thank you for coming tonight to the town hall. Thank you for sharing. As you take these GISD student outcome goal and constraint draft handouts with you, please share them with family and neighbors and other teachers. If you did not get your chance to share your thought, if you didn't wanna say anything, there is a portal on the website in which you can share your ideas so you can get on. Everything that is put on will get talked about at the board meeting and the finance meeting. So as a board, we understand that we're privileged to represent you, the Galveston community, as we provide leadership to Galveston ISD. This town hall and others we've scheduled allow us to explain what we are doing to improve, improve student outcomes and collect your ideas and conversations in a systematic manner. We hope you'll join us in the mission of GISD to educate, engage and empower each student for a life of excellence. We are both passionate and committed to this mission and will soon adopt our student outcome goals and hopefully then have nice, wonderful, high levels of student achievement. Thank you.